Well, good morning and welcome to City Hall. We're going to get started with the invocation and the pledge of allegiance. Stephon Reed is with Life Church. He's going to lead us in the invocation. Afterwards, I'll ask Councilman Greenwell if he'll lead us in the pledge of allegiance, but would everybody please stand?
You bow your heads in prayer with me. Father, first of all, we are thankful for the city council members. Father, everything they have done, all the sacrifice that they have given to lead and protect our city. And, Lord, we pray that you would give them the strength that they need to stand. Father, the courage they need to face opposition, the wisdom they need to make decisions. Lord, the burden of leading the city is a great honor. It's one that we do not take lightly. So, Lord, we pray that you would give us wisdom in guiding the people that you have put under our charge. And, Lord, we pray that we will do and do and make decisions that would honor you in all we do. We love you. It's in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. As we do from time to time, we have a presentation this morning from a wonderful and talented student from Oklahoma City University. Whenever they have a musical performance, we ask them to send over one of their students so we can kind of get a sneak preview and build up attention to the incredible talent that exists on that campus. And today, we are fortunate to have Danielle -- I'm sorry, not Danielle. We are fortunate to have Danielle Peterson. I did have the name right. Danielle, would you come up? Danielle told me this morning that she is from San Jose, California, and is going to do not just sing, but is also going to play the violin for us this morning. Why don't you set this up for us?
Good morning. I am going to be performing a little number from our opera this weekend, our Spotlight production directed by Karen Miller. And I just wanted to set up the scene. The show is about the Roman Emperor Nero and his affair with the beautiful Popaya. And I play Cupid in the show, so I'm kind of messing around with everyone and making everyone fall in love with the wrong people because I'm a little boy and I just like to mess with people. So currently, there is a plot against Popaya's life, and she's the pawn in my game of love, so I am defending her. So that's what's going on in this scene at the moment.
Thank you. That was wonderful. Now that you've given us a taste of this, tell us how we can attend.
Well, we will be having performances this Friday and Saturday at 8:00 PM and then on Sunday at 3:00 PM. And you can purchase tickets at the box office over at Oklahoma City University, or you can go on to the website. I believe it's www.OKCU.edu/tickets. And tickets are $10. And it's a phenomenal production. I really encourage you all to go see something. It's actually the first opera, pretty much, that we have in existence. So it's going to be a great performance.
I have a feeling you're right. Danielle Peterson, let's show her appreciation. That was fabulous. Thank you so much. We also have the good fortune this morning of having in our employee of the month. Every month, the Kiwanis Club from Oklahoma City allows us to pick one of our 4,000-plus employees and designate him or her as the most outstanding employee. And today, I'm going to welcome Susan Cross up front. Let's show our appreciation to Susan. And we have a resolution. I'll ask the clerk to read it.
Whereas Susan Cross has been a city employee for eight years and is an administrative coordinator in the administration division of the Utilities Department. Whereas Susan provides administrative support for the Utilities Director and Assistant Director, drafts procedures, agenda items, memos, and letters, completes travel arrangements for the Utilities Department, and manages up to five employees. Whereas Susan has a strong work ethic and is a professional, caring, patient, and understanding employee who is a positive role model for coworkers and a mentor to those who want to move up in the city. Whereas Susan has become the go-to person in Utilities Administration to get things done and is always willing to assist coworkers and citizens despite the time constraints on her job duties and responsibilities. Whereas Susan has received two customer service incentive awards in the past six months for her outstanding customer service to internal and external customers. Whereas Susan is a motivated and productive employee who brings a contagious positive attitude to the workplace, she sets an exemplary standard for service and has earned the respect of her managers and coworkers. Whereas this council desires to recognize Susan Cross for her dedication, professionalism, and commitment to the citizens of Oklahoma City. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the mayor and council of the city of Oklahoma City that they do hereby thank and commend Susan Cross, March 2015, South Oklahoma City Kiwanis Club Employee of the Month.
How about that? Let's show our appreciation to Susan. And you may know that we have to vote on this.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so if we could have a motion and a second, cast your votes. How about that, issue the animals? Susan, congratulations.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
And thank you for the rest of the department that came down to support her today. I didn't give her her resolution. There you go. Or on item three of the council agenda, I'll look for a motion on the appointments of three B, C, and D. All right, cast your votes. It passes unanimously. Item four is the Journal of Council Proceedings. Item four A is to receive the journal for February 24th, and item four B is to approve the journal of February 17th. Okay, any comments or questions on the journal? All right, cast your votes. It passes unanimously. Item five is revocable permits. We have four requests today. We'll start with item five A one. It's from Beck's Automotive to hold the Western Avenue Block Party. And it looks like Gail Vines is here. Gail? Gail, what can you tell us about this event?
Honorable counsel, thank you. I am here to represent Beck's Garage. This will be our 14th year closing down Western Avenue. I understand, and I drove past this morning, construction going on. It's moving very rapidly, efficiently. With all due respect, I can't say the same outside my neighborhood on 50th and Western, but we'll get there. This is our 14th year to shut down Western and raise money for pediatric cancer research. So I'm hoping that we can agree to move forward.
Well, wonderful cause. And, Gail, thank you and the other organizers for putting this together. Ed, to send your ward, you'll make the motion?
Second.
All right, cast your votes. It passes unanimously. Gail, thank you. All right, item five A two is from DG Productions to hold the Run Lucky 5K on March 15th. And it looks like Don Garrett and Rick Eiling are here? Yeah, good morning.
Good morning.
Yeah, what can you tell us about this event?
This is the fifth annual Run Lucky 5K and One My Fun Run. We raised money for the Friends of LLS Foundation and been very successful. It's a great party after the run. So, class and curate there.
Terrific.
Yeah, it's our fifth year. It's raised money for the Leukemia Lymphoma Society.
Wonderful. And this event is also awarded to -- Ed, you'll make the motion? All right, we have a motion and a second. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Thank you both. Then item five A three is a request from the Plaza District to hold Live on the Plaza as they have been doing for several years. These are the second Friday of each month. And Kristen Vales is here. Kristen, would you pull the microphone over there for --
Hello.
Thank you. You want to tell us about Live on the Plaza?
Live on the Plaza started in 2008, so we're on our seventh year, and it's grown quite a bit in those seven years. It's our monthly block party where we shut down the street, and we have live music and artist vendors, and our shops and galleries and studios stay open late, featuring all the great stuff they do. So we're excited to continue the progress we've had with our monthly event.
And the dates are here listed when Live on the Plaza will be held. And Kristen, I heard you're leaving your post.
I am. Next month will be my last Live on the Plaza.
Well, I can't tell you, I know I speak on behalf of the council, how impressed we've been at the strides that the Plaza District has made under your leadership. So, thank you, and we look forward to great accomplishments ahead in your career.
Thank you so much.
You bet.
Thank you. Mayor, I need to echo those comments. I really want to say thank you so much publicly, Kristen, for everything you've done for the district. It's -- I use it all the time as my best example of how a revitalized, small, urban commercial district can begin to spill over into the neighborhoods. And you're seeing it happen in Gateway and Claesen-Tanpan and just everything surrounding you. So we wish you lots of luck. We know you're going to -- you're not going to leave everybody. You're going to still be around, but thank you for everything.
Yeah, thank you all for your support over these years, too.
Move approval of this.
Cast your votes. It passes unanimously. And item five A four is from Prodigal to hold the O-City St. Patrick's Day Parade, which will be March 14th in Ward six and seven. And you must be Christina Davis.
Yes, I am. I'm here representing Prodigal, and this is our second annual O-City St. Patrick's Parade. And we'll be starting in downtown Oklahoma City and going east on Sheridan through Bricktown. So we're hoping to grow this each year, bigger and better.
And this will be March 14th?
Yes, sir.
Which is a Saturday?
Yes.
Okay.
It starts at 11:00 AM.
All right. And Ward six and seven, the two of you want to make the motion in a second?
Second.
Cast your votes. It passes unanimously. Thanks and good luck. All right, item six is request for uncontested continuances.
Mayor, just two this morning. On page nine, under item nine C1, item A, 1713 North Jordan, we asked that be stricken. We need to re-notify. Then on page 10, under item nine E1, item B, 1713 North Jordan, we asked that be stricken. Again, we need to re-notify.
All right, any other requests for uncontested continuances? Over assess the council meeting convenance the Oklahoma City Municipal Facilities Authority. Looks like there are five items.
And we do have a presentation on item B this morning.
Okay.
David Hornbeek is here with Hornbeek and Blatt Architects. Talked about this. This is our central maintenance facility, and we're adding some facilities for our general services, specifically building maintenance area, and this is authorized in the 2007 geo-bond issue.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor.
Morning.
Mr. City Manager, Honorable Councilman. As James has already told you, my name's David Hornbeek. I'm with Hornbeek Blatt Architects, and we're going to present to you the findings from our preliminary report. This is phase three of a larger project. It's part of the 2007 bond issue. The total of that was a budget of over $20 million. What we're showing on the screen right now is an aerial photograph of what is existing there at the site. And as I said earlier, this is phase three. Phase one is completed. Phase two is under construction in several different phases. This is a master plan that was created for the city before the bond issue. And our area is this space right here. Little over two acres of land. It essentially consists of administrative offices and warehouse space. Project is a little over 32,000 square feet, and the budget for the project was $4,875,000. This is the team that's working on it, along with ourselves, Johnson and Associates as a civil engineer, Dar Collins MEP, Trumbull and Dean Structural, and pre-congress during our cost estimating. This is the site that we have and what we're proposing at this time, the general services, administrative offices, and the warehouse with room for future expansion. And this is overall plan. The administrative offices will be on the south end of the building, and all of the warehouse space will be in the north end. Here's a blow-up of the proposed plan. We've worked closely with staff to lay that out in what we think is a very functional and efficient layout. Here's the south end of the north warehouse and the north end of the north warehouse. These are photographs of existing buildings that already are on the site, and we're going to match the exterior on this and the roof pitch, and so it will be part of the overall campus complex. As I said, the budget was $4,875,000. If you've seen our report, our cost with our contingency at this point is $4,870,000. This is the schedule that we propose. Complete final plans in June and award construction in August of this year and try to be complete with the project in August of 2016. Do you have any questions?
Questions for Don?
Mayor or manager, am I correct that this is the site that also has, as part of the master plan, a new facility for IMSA?
Yes, adjacent to its site, on the east side.
Is there a timeline for that?
The -- I didn't hear her, but I think she asked about the IMSA project.
I did ask about the IMSA project.
It is actually -- you can see that on that master plan. Would you like me to go back to that slide?
If you don't mind.
I don't mind at all. The IMSA project was shown at this area right here at this time.
And, David, is there a timeline for that?
For the IMSA?
For IMSA.
I'm going to have to bow to Mr. Eric Winger.
Counsel, we're actually working with IMSA very closely, and so there isn't a timeline yet, but what I can share with you is that you'll notice near Portland Avenue, there's an area space that's not included as a part of the IMSA site. IMSA is actively seeking to possibly acquire those private developments so they'll actually have street frontage included as a part of the project. So right now, we're keying off of the IMSA schedule to see when they're ready to move forward, but I don't have any dates I can provide this morning.
Eric, who would own that? Would the trust own it or?
So at this time, the area that you see that David outlined that's got the proposed building for IMSA, that's actually owned by the city with projected lease to IMSA. We don't own the area adjacent to Portland. I would suspect that they would own that outright. So we're not actively seeking the frontage. There are two active businesses there on those two parcels. Thank you.
Yeah, Pat?
On the office area, you showed a lot of offices in there. Are those actually offices or are they cubicles?
They're actual management offices.
The wall, they'll have?
Yes, sir.
Not modified?
There are some that are cubicles, but there are -- let me advance this and I'll show you. All of the offices on the exterior are offices, and there are some offices in here. If you look closely, you can see like this area here that says "part-time." There's no wall across that, but it has three walls around it. So it's more than a cubicle because it's got three walls around it, but it will be open. It doesn't have a door into it.
So that will be modular office space?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear that.
That'll be modular office space?
That will be -- those part-time spaces and some of these others will be modular. Yes, sir.
Thank you, John.
All right, we need a motion on the MMA. All right, any comments or questions on the rest of the part of the agenda? All right, cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll adjourn the OC MFA convenance the Oklahoma City Public Property Authority. There are two items. All right, comments or questions on the PPA? All right, cast your votes. It passes unanimously. We'll adjourn the OC PPA convenance the Oklahoma City Environmental Assistance Trust. There are two items. Is there a second? All right, cast your votes. And the EAT passes unanimously. We'll adjourn the OCEAT reconvene the council meeting with the consent docket. All right, are there any individual considerations?
I had a few this morning, Mayor, if you don't mind. 7M, I see Robbie Kinsel here, I'd like to talk about the public art.
We actually have a presentation on that one.
Okay, great. 7O, 7X, and 1, 2, and 3, I think you probably have a presentation on that, too.
We have a major presentation on that one, so.
Okay, I can ignore that. 7X4, and then 7AA.
Okay.
So that's a whole series.
Anybody else? All right, Meg, why don't you -- you want to hear the presentations first?
Sure, do you want to do that?
Yeah, let's do that.
That's fine.
Let's start with Robbie Kinsel to talk about the art installation that's being proposed for the new police headquarters. And just to remind council, at the conclusion of today's council meeting, we will have an opportunity to go take a tour of the new police headquarters. I picked the day because it was going to be 60 degrees.
Nice.
Good morning.
Hi, Robbie.
Hi, Robbie Kinsel, Liaison for Arts and Cultural Affairs for the city. I also want to introduce Alexis Ackard. She's a part-time artist in residence that helps with a lot of the art selection that we do. And Alexis is going to bring it up. So, go ahead and advance the next one. So when we approach public art selection, we are hiring a consultant, a very professional practice consultant, the artist. And the artist responds to the site, its architecture, and its stakeholders. Ultimately, there's a story to tell, and it's their job to figure out what that story is. And proceed. So we always start, of course, the project approach with a budget. And this is developed by Public Works, and it's based on 1% of the construction cost for a project. And so this does not include land acquisition or any of the soft costs associated, you know, with design or testing or any of those things. And then there's also a selection committee. And the selection committee, they are the owners of the project. They have a great ownership in the outcome. They spend about 15 to 20 hours on selection itself. They shortlist. They often are involved in the mandatory site tour, and then they're involved in the final recommendation that goes then to the Arts Commission and to city council. And in the case of the -- we always have the department or the department head or their designee, and then always the architect or the designer involved. And then also, there's an arts commissioner who the Arts Commission chair designates. We use a professional art juror, and the preference of the Arts Commission is that professional art juror is a practicing public art artist. And it was very important for stakeholders in the police department that the deputy chief serve and that also a city manager's office representative and also the head of the Police Association, Major Ed Hill. Then I work very closely with the public arts project manager and also our artists in residence to coordinate the entire process. So the project purposes develop for each project, and in the case of the police headquarters, it was very important that the investment that was already made in the memorial stones be protected and preserved and that those memorial stones become part of the public art for the new facility. These are representative of the fallen officers and also their families, and they're used as part of a memorial. They're a backdrop for the memorial service that's held every May. There's a National Month of Mourning in May, and then also the state does a ceremony, and also our local police association organizes one in the afternoon. So this project announcement was approved by council in September of last year, and we had a deadline for artist entries in November. In addition to the journal record, we published this announcement in several different arts organizations across the state and then also regionally. We also use the Public Art Network that is part of Americans for Art, so this is a national listserv that goes out all over the world, actually. And then we rely heavily on Facebook and Twitter. And so here's an example of the Facebook post. And these often get shared quite rigorously when they're announced. So in all, there were 41 artist responses to this project. It was a $207,500 commission. And in December, the committee shortlisted five artists. Normally, we look at three, but in this case, the selection committee really wanted a broad range of styles, so they asked for five. And so these five finalists were paid a stipend of $2,500 to attend a mandatory site tour. This is a day-long tour where they get to see, they get to hear the history. They used police yearbooks. They saw a lot of different videos. They got to see the actual site under construction, hear about the materials and the design and what the parameters were on the plaza for the new police headquarters. And part of the $2,500 that they're paid is not only for their travel and expenses, but also because they're producing a very site-specific proposal. They have to produce detailed plans of the artwork they propose with the design, a maintenance plan, installation details, and a lot of other reference information that is checked before the final selection. So the finalists presented their proposals all day on February 13th, and Gordon Hether was recommended by the committee. And here you see a picture of Gordon. He was born in 1959 in Rochester, New York, to German immigrant parents, and he has dual citizenship in both Germany and the US, and he spends much of his time traveling between the two countries. In all, he has produced 60 public art commissions in his lifetime and more than 150 private commissions, and his work range for medical centers, airports, civic projects, a lot of projects in California. So here's on our next slide, here's the entry to the police headquarters. This is the north side of the building, and you can see the square down on the lower portion of the slide. That's the entry. And so his work will be set just west of that entry. And there are two paths of this very dense dichroic gla-- And there are two paths of this very dense dichroic glass that you can almost see little lines. These will be placed in the ground to draw your eye. And what's really great about these, even though that'll be on the shady side of the building, these don't need any light. You can see they're very saturated color, and they're very highly reflective. So as you walk up, your eye will be immediately drawn to the west. And then next, here is what the actual artwork looks like. And I have another sample. There's an open-air canopy consisting of six aluminum arches. And you can see during the day, you might be able to see that it's kind of a yellow reflective. And then at night, light will reflect through it, and it'll be almost blue because the lights will be positioned underneath it. And so this work will be installed right around the completion of the headquarters building, around September of this year. And it'll be open in time for the grand opening. And so, do you have any questions? And so the item on your agenda will be to authorize staff to begin negotiation of the contract.
Robbie, thank you.
Thank you.
Comments or questions from counsel?
I have a question.
Yeah, Pat?
It's not to Robbie, but on the project we just approved, central maintenance facility, we have the same requirement to invest in art there?
Yes.
Are we gonna do some, we have some plans to do smart?
We will do smart. I'm not sure what that will be at this point in time.
Thank you. Any other questions?
No, I think you're good to go. Thank you very much. Another presentation?
We do. This is a, David Todd's coming up, and we're gonna have a presentation on a trail project, a MAPS-3 trail project from Lake Hefner down to the river, generally along the corridor of I-44. And this is broken up into three different design projects. So David's gonna give us an overview, and then each of the three designers will come up and present their segment of the overall project.
Good morning. I'm happy to bring you this presentation today. And as Mr. Cott said, there's three preliminary reports. And in each of those reports, it had some redundant information, so I thought I'd just cover that at first. And then each of the consultants can come up and talk about their specific piece of the project. So this is phase two of the MAPS-3 Trails Improvements. We refer to it as the I-44 Trail because it's predominantly along I-44. It's a multi-use trail, like the others, connecting Lake Hefner with the Oklahoma River. You can see the budget there with a total of $13,877,000. And this links residents along that corridor through multiple points of interest. Just as an overview, this alignment comes, if you recall, from the alignment study that we did, and we brought to you about three months ago. And that was a study that was done with a lot of public input. A lot of alignments were considered. A lot of things were taken into consideration on this. So this is the result of that. This trail is a total of 8.15 miles. And the trail is predominantly 12 feet wide. In some places, it might narrow down to 10 feet because of width constrictions. But as we said, the trail has been divided into three sections with three engineering companies working on this trail with a budget of $3 million per section. This is a typical section, nothing real complicated about it. As I said, it's predominantly 12 feet, narrows down to 10 feet. And you'll see in one place, it actually splits and narrows down to about six feet in two pieces. And you'll see that in a little bit, but for the most part, it's 12 feet. This is an overview map of the entire alignment. And you can see that it goes from, as I said, the Lake Hefner trails along the I-44 corridor all the way down to the river. And you can see the boxes indicate how we've split the projects up with each of the consultants. So our first piece, we'll start on the north and move to the south. Our first piece is being engineered by Johnson and Associates. And Chris Savage is here to talk about his specifics on his part of the trail.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Manager, council members. Chris Savage with Johnson and Associates, we're the engineer of record for Project One. This is the northern third of the trail project. As David mentioned, it goes from Lake Hefner to Northwest 50th Street and I-44. Total length is just at 2.5 miles. And also, as David mentioned, project budget was $3 million. And at this point, for the preliminary report, our current construction cost estimate is $2.8 million. Here's a general overview of the trail route. In the upper left of the image, you can see Lake Hefner, and we'll start at the parking lot there at Northwest Expressway and Meridian Avenue. We'll head south down Meridian Avenue to Northwest 63rd, continuing east down Northwest Expressway to Portland. We'll cross a little further to the east on Northwest 56th Street, and then head south down the Frontage Road to Northwest 50th and I-44. We'll look at each one of these sections in a little bit more detail as we continue. This is an urban trail, so very different in character from the trails that you'd see around Lake Hefner or down on the river as were adjacent to many public streets. So right adjacent to Meridian Avenue, Northwest 63rd, Northwest Expressway. This is a section looking along Meridian Avenue, where you can see that we're relatively close to the street. We're between the street and the right-of-way line. So in these locations, we've put the trail closer to the right-of-way line to get as much separation from the roadway as we can. This is the northern end of the route, beginning at the trailhead at the parking lot at Northwest Expressway and Meridian Avenue. We will connect to the existing trails at Lake Hefner. We'll cross Northwest Expressway and head south down the east side of Meridian Avenue to Northwest 63rd. We'll then continue east along the south side of Northwest 63rd Street. We have several public streets to cross, so several street crossings and a lot of driveway crossings in these two sections, Meridian and 63rd Street. We're between the street and a lot of parking lots for shopping centers and businesses. We'll cross several driveways and have to deal with a lot of utilities that are in the right-of-way, as you would expect. At Northwest Expressway, we'll be on the south side of Northwest Expressway, and there's about 50 feet of right-of-way in that location. We'll be closest up to the, or as far away from Northwest Expressway as we can, closest to those fence lines that are back there at the back of the residences. At Portland Avenue, we'll cross Portland Avenue and head south down the east side of Portland Avenue, adjacent to Messiah Lutheran Church, again, crossing some business parks, to Northwest 56th Street, where we'll be on the south side of 56th Street. As we head east over to the Grand Boulevard Frontage Road, where we'll be on the west side of the Frontage Road as we continue south. And then as we hit the residential neighborhoods right there, as you're familiar with that area there, ODOT has some screen walls, the barrier walls, the large brick walls. We'll be on the west side or the residential side of those screen walls. At 50th Street, we'll cross Northwest 50th, and Project One will terminate on the south side of Northwest 50th Street. This right-of-way acquisition map illustrates where we anticipate needing temporary right-of-way as was illustrated by the blue boxes. Those are for rebuilding driveways and parking lots as we may need to in order to make the grades work out. The one spot where we anticipate permanent right-of-way is at Northwest Expressway and Portland Avenue, where Portland Avenue has been widened, and we'll get onto the church property there. Anticipated schedule, we're here for a final approval of the preliminary report. We anticipate having final plans and specifications submitted in June of this year, beginning construction in September, and have a 10-month window for construction, which would have us complete in June of 2016, so summer of next year to be completed with Project One. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any of your questions.
Timetable for that?
Timetable, again, we'll begin construction September of this year and finish in June or summer of next year.
Okay. And just to be clear to the people who might be watching, this is for, because this is not a sidewalk, this is a trail. This would be opening to biking as well as other types of?
That's correct. It is a multi-use trail. It'll actually function for both sidewalk and trail. So it will be open for cycling, rollerblading, running, walking, and just getting from point A to point B, as the case may be.
Can you tell me again, I think the most intimidating part of it's crossing Northwest Expressway.
You bet.
What are we doing on Northwest Expressway?
You bet. Let's back up here. Indeed, the crossing at Meridian Northwest Expressway is challenging. That's about 120 feet, which is four first downs in football terminology, to give you just a grasp of how far that is. There's, of course, the existing traffic signals are there. We'll modify those to have the pedestrian push buttons. And we'll also modify the timing of that signal light to give everyone ample time to cross that, cross Northwest Expressway. When we are interested in people getting from all the way across, we don't want someone stuck in the middle. You do not want to be stuck in the middle of Northwest Expressway. So we'll do a study and make sure that people have ample time to walk across Northwest Expressway. So we don't want to push the button and have to feel like you've got to sprint for your life to get to the other side.
Any additional signage or anything like that?
At all of the public street crossings, there will be signage. All of it will meet the accessibility requirements, so it'll be audible, have the visual cues as well, and have, I believe, have the counters as well to give you an idea of how much time you've got. You're welcome.
I think this trail really opens up a lot of people to our trail system. It's a great project. Thanks.
Fantastic.
So the middle piece is being engineered by MacArthur Associated Consultants. And we have Russell Kent here to talk to you about this piece.
Mr. Mayor, City Manager, council members, good morning. My name's Russell Kent, and I'll be taking you through the center section of the trail. This is a quick overview map. As you can see, the center section picks up at Northwest 50th Street and continues along Grand Boulevard all the way to Northwest 19th Street. Much of what Chris mentioned in the north section will apply to the center section. The project budget, again, is $3 million. This particular section is 2.77 miles. As I mentioned, we begin on the south side of Northwest 50th Street and Grand Boulevard, and we continue to the south side of Northwest 19th Street and Grand Boulevard. Based on the preliminary report, the preliminary construction estimate is just a little under $3 million, $2.99 million. So a quick overview of the trail alignment. As I mentioned, we begin there in the center of the picture, at Northwest 50th Street. We will utilize the existing utility easement, which runs on the west side of the I-44 sound wall and the backside of the Treadwell Hills neighborhood. You'll see in a moment, there's a picture of that area. And that will continue down to Northwest 42nd Street. Move forward. This is an image of the Northwest 50th Street crossing, looking south. So we'll begin on the south side of that crossing there. And you can see the beginning of that utility easement between the wall and the backside of the properties there. This is a typical view of that easement. As you can see, we're between 30 and 40 feet wide, so there's plenty of room for a trail there. And that's an ideal location in terms of lack of street crossings, that kind of thing. You can see there are a few utilities, a few trees, which we will try to avoid and incorporate drainage aspects to into the trail. As we move on down, that will continue to Northwest 42nd Street, and we will move on to Grand Boulevard at that location. That's where Grand Boulevard starts up again. We'll follow Grand Boulevard all the way to St. Clair Avenue and use that to cross Northwest 39th Street, crossing on the west side of the street, and continuing on St. Clair to Northwest 38th. We'll move on the north side of Northwest 38th Street, utilizing the existing ODOT right-of-way on the entryway into I-44 there. We'll be on the backside of that, on the backside of the right-of-way fence, and continuing all the way down Grand Boulevard through Will Rogers Park, crossing Northwest 36 on the west side, and continuing on the west side of Grand all the way down. You'll notice the blue square indicated in Will Rogers Park. That's a location for a trailhead parking area. That's approximately halfway between Lake Hefner and the Oklahoma River, so it's a logical place for a trailhead parking that people could begin or end their use of the trail at that location. There's also a creek crossing in Will Rogers Park, and we'll be utilizing a precast pedestrian bridge over that creek. This image is Northwest 39th Street. This is looking south and west at that crossing. There is an existing signal there, and we'll be utilizing that and modifying the size of the striping and the lighting to accommodate the trail over there. This image is looking north at Will Rogers Park. This is the entryway. That's Will Rogers Exhibition Center, to the left of the image. And just on the north side, that's Northwest 36th Street. This location, we'll be actually reconstructing a small section of the existing curb line to allow the trail to sit in the road. That's about a 40-foot road, so we'll be just re-striping that to accommodate a standard 13-foot lane, and we'll be able to minimize the impact of the landscaping area outside the exhibition center. This image shows the potential area for the trailhead parking. Draw attention to the existing trees. On the next image, you will see the, a proposed layout. We'll be minimizing impact to those trees, sort of designing the pavement around those trees, and really trying to avoid any removal of trees in that location. The final section, once we leave Will Rogers Park, we'll continue on the west side of Grand all the way down to Northwest 19th Street. We have a major intersection at Northwest 23rd Street. As you're probably aware, that street is currently, well, it's under design. There's a Northwest 23rd Street streetscape project. We'll be coordinating with that project to ensure that their ADA ramps are sized appropriately for a trail so that we can simply tie into what was constructed there and not have to redo any work. This image just shows the end point of the trail, at Northwest 19th Street. We'll cross over at that location, over to the south side, and we will tie to the final section of the trail. This is the schedule. Again, it mirrors what Chris discussed with the north section, so I won't dwell on that. But after this point, we'll move forward with final plans. Construction begins September, and we have a nine-to-10-month window for construction, so ending in the summer of 2016. And that concludes the center section.
All right, questions on this phase of the construction?
Thank you.
Thanks very much.
All right, for our final section, we have MKEC doing the engineering. We have Doug Clausen here to talk about that piece.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Manager, members of the council, thank you. I'm Doug Clausen with MKEC Engineering. And we're working on this project in collaboration with RL Shears Company. And we have the south section of this trail. Similar to my predecessors here, this one is about 2.94 miles, so it's a little bit longer section of trail. It runs from Northwest 19th Street where Russell left off, down to the Oklahoma River. And we'll meet up with the existing trails there. The project budget is also $3 million, and our estimate per the preliminary report is about 2.9, just under 2.97 million. This is just an overview of this section of trail. The alignment will, again, begin where Russell's section left off at Northwest 19th. We'll be on the west side of Grand Boulevard. We'll utilize the existing bridge over I-44 at Northwest 16th to cross to the east side of Grand. And then we'll run along the east side of Grand, south, under the Northwest 10th Street bridges, and then on the south side of Northwest 10th. And then we'll turn and go along the west side of May, along the fairgrounds. And at Reno, we'll be crossing Reno, and we'll also be crossing May. So we'll be on the east side of May, from there down to the river. I've kind of broken these up into three sections within this section just to talk in a little bit more detail about these. And this is just an overview of that north section. Again, kind of the same things I've just covered. Extends along the west side to 16th, and then we'll cross at 16th and go up to the east side of Grand. Couple of details here just to look at. This is a picture of the Northwest 16th Street Bridge. And you can see there's some space on the outside of the white lines there, and there's also some sidewalks. And we have a diagram showing kind of the way that we'll be crossing that bridge. We'll actually be utilizing both sides of the bridge. We'll be utilizing that extra space in the pavement to create on-street bike lanes. And the pedestrians will use the sidewalk along each side. It'll be split directional so that the bicyclists will be moving with traffic. I also would like to mention that ODOT currently is, they currently- I also would like to mention that ODOT currently is, they currently are designing rehabilitation of this bridge, and we are coordinating with them to ensure that we will have adequate space on the pavement for the bike lanes, as well as adequate sidewalk on each side. This is just a picture of the east side of Grand. This is looking north, and you can see there's adequate space here for the trail. We will be within the, in the existing right-of-way, and in some areas, we're six feet away from the sidewalk, in other areas, we move to about 15 feet away from the, or, excuse me, from the street with the trail, and in some areas, we're about 15 to 20 feet, where we have additional space, just to get the trail a little bit farther away from the street. This is an overview of the central section. As I mentioned, we will utilize the, we'll, we'll cross under the Northwest 10th Street bridges. We'll, we'll add some retaining walls there to create enough space to do so, but there won't be any additional work to cross there. And then we'll be running adjacent to the fairgrounds along Northwest 10th and along May. Just a couple of photos here. This is on the west side of May, south of Northwest 10th, and in some areas along this section, we will be utilizing existing sidewalk where it's in good condition, and we'll be adding a concrete trail adjacent to that sidewalk to add the, the adequate width, to create the 12-foot width. David mentioned this earlier. This is along May, on the west side of May, near Northwest 4th Street. Again, we're still adjacent to the fairgrounds. As you can see on the left side of this photo, there's an existing stormwater detention area for the fairgrounds there, and a retaining wall and sidewalk that are new with the May Avenue streetscape. And this is the, the point at which we'll actually split the trail, so we'll utilize the sidewalk that you see here as, as half of the trail, and then we'll add a six-foot sidewalk on the top side of this retaining wall to create the remaining width for the trail. Trail users will be asked to split here, again, directionally, so that you have all the, all the folks going one direction on this, on the, on the bottom side, and all the folks going the other direction on the top side, reduce conflicts that way. Part of the reasoning for doing this split trail is, there's a lot of trees that have recently been planted with the May Avenue project, and we didn't want to have to relocate all those trees, so we've decided that this was an excellent compromise. There still will be just a few trees to be relocated. I think it's on the order of eight to 10. This is a view of the existing UP Railroad Bridge. We will be crossing under this bridge. As you can see in this photo, the sidewalk is, is in poor condition here, so we will actually be replacing that sidewalk with a new 12-foot wide trail. And this is the south section overview. I mentioned the crossing at Reno. We will be on the west side of May, approaching the intersection from the north. We'll cross May Avenue to the east side, and then we'll cross Reno, going from north to south. Be utilizing the existing crosswalks there. We will be upgrading the signals to, for the upgraded, you know, push buttons, timing, and so forth. Then we will extend, we'll utilize the, we'll, we'll be crossing under I-40, utilizing the existing sidewalk there. There's no need for, for any upgrades there. We will be also upgrading the signals at the I-40 frontage roads for the push buttons and timing and so forth. Extending down toward the river, you can see there, there's also an outline. It'll be about a 30-space parking area, trailhead parking there before the trail extends to connect to the existing river trail. This is a view of the I-40 bridges over May, and you can see there is adequate space there for the trail with, using the existing sidewalks. Our schedule mirrors the other two projects in this phase of the trails. Preliminary report, we're asking for that approval today. Final plans by June of 2015, and construction to begin in September, completing in June of 2016. Happy, glad to answer. Any questions, Mayor?
Questions? It's like a great project. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Any questions for David before we move on? All right. Any other presentations on the consent docket?
No, sir.
All right. Meg, do you want to comment on a series of items?
I, I did, Mayor, thank you. I'll be very brief. I just wanted to mention that item O is a contract awarded to Atlas Paving Company for 12 locations of street resurfacing and repairs roughly in the vicinity of Northwest 10th to 13th on Classen Francis Chertel Lee Walker. I just wanted to make sure the neighbors were aware of that. Item number I is, oh, those are our trails. We just did that, sorry. I'm sorry, I'm suffering through the end of bronchitis. I'm trying to, if you're having an out-of-body experience, I think. Item number X4 is Maps 3 sidewalks, and I just wanted to point out that we've got sidewalks going in virtually every ward with this package, 1, 2, 4, 5, 6, and 7, and, you know, they're just happening. And eight. They're happening all over, all over the city, and I think everybody's seeing the construction, and I just wanted to, to notice that. And then the last thing is, the Ferris wheel's coming. I don't know if the rest of my colleagues get asked a question regularly, but I do. I heard, once upon a time, somebody bought a Ferris wheel on eBay, and I heard it was coming to Oklahoma City. Is it coming? And in fact, it is coming to the Wheeler District. We're looking at a temporary revocable permit with Humphreys Partners to locate a Ferris wheel and some of its amenities down on the south side of the river. It should be the first step in a, just a tremendous new development, but this will be a real attraction. They hope to have it up by May of 15. Very exciting.
It's fast-tracked. All right. Any other items?
Mayor, I have a comment.
All right.
The, this is just a amendment to the continuum of care operating group with Hope. Hope has been a longtime resident in Ford Ford's, and recently, in the last year or so, has moved from Shields to Walker, and it performs a wonderful service for Oklahoma City. It's a really great organization. I, as I drive by there on occasion, I note that with the number of people standing out in the weather like we had yesterday and like we'll have tomorrow, it could certainly use a butt shelter at that corner, so I'd like to make sure that gets put on the list. It, probably the list was made at a time before Hope got there, the list of most active stops, and since it's moved over there, I suspect it's risen a great deal, because you see a lot of people sitting there out in the cold waiting.
Walker and?
59th, just south of 59th on Walker. But it's a great organization, and they deserve all the help we can give them. I appreciate this being on the agenda today.
All right. Do we have a motion on the consent docket? All right. Ready to vote the consent docket? Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Moves us on to the concurrence docket, just two items today. All right. Any individual comments or considerations on the concurrence? All right. Cast your votes. It passed unanimously. And then item nine is items requiring a separate vote. We'll start with an ordinance that's up for final hearing today, and this is a fee adjustment that relates to sewer and sewage disposal. Is there anyone here hoping to speak on this item before we vote on item 9A? All right. It's been introduced, and we've held a public hearing, and now we're here for one final vote from the council. Any comments before we vote? All right. How about a motion? Cast your votes. It passed unanimously. Item 9B is an ordinance for final hearing today, and this is an item we discussed last week. Has anybody signed up to speak on this item? Okay. We have a couple of people that have signed up to speak. I'll remind the council, this is the parking restriction issue on Northeast 16th Street. And let's hear from Jaclyn Bass first. Jaclyn? Well, I think you probably should, because James is here, and so I, I think you should probably present. You're, you're the one initiating the change.
Yes.
And so I thought it'd be appropriate for you to
Okay, thank you.
Say why you believe that before we
Good morning.
Hear from James, and then we'll vote.
The reason why I got a petition is because where we live, we have shared driveways, and there's one way coming and going, and there's, if there's, if there's more than, there's two cars where we live. At first, it was four, but we're not, we're no longer renting out the back place, which has made it easier, because it was really a problem and issue, and there's two cars next door, so there's one lane coming and going. Well, when we had, when we were renting the place in the back, there was always a problem with someone blocking someone, you know? Everyone had different times and different schedules. We can't park in front of our home, so if the driveway is full, if you try to park in front of the, of your home, you could get a ticket, and if you have guests coming over, they have to park around the corner, you know, and walk over, like, you know, and weather and everything, and so the one of the, and then after, I thought that I was the only one, that it was really serious at the time that I decided to get a petition, and when I talked to a lot of the neighbors, most of them, there were two neighbors that really weren't in agreement with it. You know, one was concerned about emergency vehicles getting in and out, and the other one, they weren't in agreement with it, which is the gentleman that's here now. But most of the people that I talked to, they've lived with the situation for so long, they just learned to kind of adjust their life around it. And a lot of people, sometimes, they can't, they can't change the situation, so they've had to park in front of their place, and they've gotten tickets. A lady down the, on the corner, she has gotten a thousand, I mean, thousands of dollars worth of tickets because she has different cars, and so she's, I guess she's just learned to adjust her life around it. So that's the reason, I thought I was the only one dealing with the frustration, but there is a lot of the neighbors dealing with the frustration, and then I found out that there was someone on 15th Street that started petition, and she just kind of dropped off the map. I don't know if she had the problem that I had, trying to get, you know, contact everyone or get people to, you know, to, you know, to sign or catching up with everyone. So that's the reason why I got the, you know, did the petition, was to try to make life easier, you know, for me and the neighbors that were complaining because they cannot park in front of their house. I found out that the signs were originally put there, because at the time, for OU Medical Center, the students were parking there in front of people's houses and blocking driveways and things like that, so they had the signs put up to protect the neighbors, but I know that that was a long time ago, so the parking has improved. So that, that was one of the reasons why I, I had got the petition and had it signed, is to try to make life better for me and my family and the neighbors. You know, most of the neighbors, the majority of the neighbors feel the same way that I feel. There are some that don't, and, and that's normal, so I just wanted, that's one of the reasons why.
Okay. Thanks, Jaclyn.
I, I have, I have a question about the petition. I, I'm counting on, from the aerial map, there's 11 homes in that block. Is that right?
11 homes?
I think so.
I didn't count.
You didn't? Okay. Well, I, I counted 11, so you, were, were there nine? You said two did not sign it, or the other, the other guy signed the petition?
Well, there were two, some, there were, some of the places no longer exist. I mean, and then there was one place that they turned it into two, and the two people that I actually know that weren't in agreement was, was an older woman. She was concerned about emergency, emergency vehicles getting in and out, and the other gentleman, and he's here now, and, and he has his complaints and reasons as to why. He, he, he lives in a single home where he doesn't share a driveway. I share a driveway. I have one driveway coming and going, and there's other neighbors that I talked to that share a shared driveway. They have one driveway coming and going, so that means that, it makes it very difficult, because if you have someone come over, or if, you know, and they can't get out, you have to, you know, disturb the neighbor, or you have to get up and get out and let them, you know, get out of the house and let them in, or let them out.
So, so how many, how many actual signatures do you have of the, per, how many homes did you get a signature for the petition? Because I'd never seen it.
I got 26 signatures that agree, and then two that didn't agree.
Okay.
I mean, if I, let me see, because I had to do it twice, because when I came back, I had to sit down and explain to him, because he said that I needed, you know, more signatures, so.
Okay.
All right. Jaclyn, thanks. James Tyler?
Good morning.
Morning, James.
I am against it. There are several reasons. I think that lifting restrictions on one street, on one side of the street, will interfere with the continuity of the neighborhood. We have, you know, learned to deal with these restrictions, it's a small sacrifice for 8:00 to 5:00, Monday through Friday. These restrictions allow for no parking during the day, but plenty of parking at night and on, on the weekends, unlimited. I think it's, you know, there are two streets in our neighborhood, well, one street, 14th Street between Lincoln Boulevard and Lindsay on the north side, has parking restrictions from, I think it's 7:00 AM to 9:00 AM, and students park there on that street. And then on 14th Street between Lindsay and Phillips on the south side is already student parking, and those streets are, those parts of the streets are filled up every day. I just, there's, and it's also been implied that there are shared driveways in our neighborhood. That's not true. There's, there's driveways, or two driveways budded next to each other, one for each property, and every property on our street has its own driveway. The parking restrictions were put in place for the OU Medical Center, and OU Medical Center is bigger than ever, and there will always be that threat, the non-residents parking Lincoln Terrace. Some say that the OU Health and Science Center has parking, has enough parking now. If that is true, why are there student parking in our neighborhood already? The south, we've been, the residents of Lincoln Terrace need to protect the area from the expanding medical facilities, not to mention struggling medical students have to pay for a parking permit. I'm sure that they would rather not pay and walk the two extra blocks than pay for the parking permit. I believe that keeping the parking restrictions in place is the best thing for the long-term growth of the neighborhood. Most of the streets in Lincoln Terrace have parking restrictions. To lift these parking restrictions on one side of the street is the only way to break up continuity of the area. Why lift these when all the others work for the residents and neighborhood? Someday in the future, I wish, I am fearful, that the prospective homeowner chooses another house in a different street over mine, due to the fact that my street, and my street alone, has too many cars on it. I would like to keep the property values rising. To clutter streets would not help this effect. In fact, it will hurt it. It does take some sacrifice to build something great, to change an area that is ripe for the picking. Our neighborhood is ready to reinvent itself, to change its mindset that it has plateaued. Well, it hasn't. With many, with our, with the help of our civic leaders, neighborhood leaders, we can do anything any other historic neighborhood has accomplished. Spirits are high. Many homeowners are getting involved with the beautification projects in our home tour. Lifting these restrictions may make it easier to park now, but with the capital employees and the growth of the OU Health and Science Center in such proximity, will this small matter have larger repercussions that we cannot predict? I am willing to make a small parking sacrifice to cultivate something I believe in. I hope the members of the city council can realize the vision that the homeowners have of Lincoln Terrace. Appreciate it.
Yeah. James, let me ask a question.
Sure.
So this was, the issue before us is to remove the signs on the north side of the street?
That's correct.
On the south side, are the, are the signs there, and they'll remain?
They will, I suppose, yes, I believe so.
Okay. But we're just dealing with the north side right now?
Just the north side, just one side of one street.
And currently, there's both. Jaclyn, I'll hear from you in a sec. All right. Thanks, James.
I have one thing to say about the petition. The petition, I believe, was completely wrong. My house, 701, was counted as yes when we counted, when we put down on the petition no. And I'm not sure how, or it was overlooked. In that petition, even the guy across, excuse me, the residents across the street don't even live in our, that house anymore that are on the petition. I think there's a lot of residents in and out, and to vote for something and then leave, and leave the homeowners who are there for a long term with, with a problem, I don't believe is right.
Okay.
Thank you.
James, thanks. Jaclyn, do you want to say? Jaclyn, do you want to say anything before we vote?
What I meant by shared driveways is that even though we have our own driveway, I have to use their driveway to come out, and they have to use my driveway to come out if there's a car. So maybe I worded it wrong, and I know, I did, when, when I found out what I needed to do for the petition, I did the north side because they, I didn't, everyone signed, and I'm, that's the thing I'm concerned about. Even though I said the north side, I know I'm concerned about the disappointment of the people that also signed on the south side, because after talking to all the neighbors, all of them, I'm not all of them, but the majority of them, um, are unhappy with not being able to park in their, in front of their home. I feel that it's a neighborhood problem. Um, you know, I feel that a lot of people feel the same way that I do. It took courage for me to step out and do this, not knowing, coming there and after talking to everyone and finding out that this is something that has been that way for so long, I didn't even feel that I could do anything about it to make a difference. But I, I'm stepping out in faith and doing that, and I know that the north side, I wish it could be for all the neighbors, you know, I'm sure, I, I know that there, the majority of people that are unhappy with it is, um, higher than the majority of the people that are not happy with it.
Okay.
But they're not doing, they don't know what to do about it. So I'm, I feel like just having the north side, I mean, maybe it calls them to step out and do something about it when they see a change, because I know that they're just as unhappy as I am. Maybe it'll start people doing something about it.
All right, thanks. James, you want to say anything else before we vote?
I just think that, uh, the neighborhood is, the property values could go up. I think it's a, to have just a couple hours of parking restrictions to keep cars off the streets is, is a small sacrifice to keep the street, the neighborhood uncluttered. I mean, we all have to deal with things throughout life, and on our streets, parking restrictions.
Right.
Thank you.
Okay.
May I ask a question, James?
David, James, David wants to ask a question.
Did you say that the surrounding streets, or the adjacent streets, have similar type of parking restrictions currently?
From, uh, Fourteenth Street is the only one from, uh, Fourteenth Street has a few parking restrictions, and then up to Culberson. Culberson doesn't have any, as far as I know, and then other streets, but Culberson's a little different, it has a shopping.
Yeah.
A small district, and then other streets have parking as well, uh, restrictions as well.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
To, to me, this doesn't really make a lot of sense. If, if you, if the petition was to get rid of the restriction on this whole, you know, these four blocks of Sixteenth Street, and not just one side of one block, um, I, I kind of get the idea that, you know, if we close that one, one side of one block, it might cause other people to say that, oh, we can do that too, but, um, doing it piecemeal doesn't seem to be the most efficient way, um, because I, I think that closing it just on that one part will have a negative effect on that one side of the street. And so all these other, that has the, um, cause my guess would be that that's one side of the street's going to get full of cars really quickly. But, you know, this isn't, this isn't in Ward One, it just, uh, but it, it doesn't make a lot of sense to me.
Okay.
Just, just looking at it objectively.
Any other comments from council?
Just my, my experience with free parking is people flow to it. And if you've got students there, I think you're going to have a real problem with students filling up those spaces.
Right. All right, oh, we need a motion.
All right, Mr. Mayor, and first of all, I, I do want to thank the two individuals who came down here this morning. I know both of you all's schedule's very busy, so I just want to say thank you to, um, Mrs. Bass. I know it took a lot of courage for you to get people to sign the petitions and so forth. I, uh, I stay, uh, in walking distance of the Omni Plex, the, matter of fact, more so of, uh, the Zoo Empath Theater. And on my street, we have, uh, signs that, that states, "No parking, uh, doing, uh, Zoo Empath Theater, uh, concerts," some, something to that effect. And occasionally what happens, you have individuals, um, if they're especially a major concert, they park all down, up and down the street, where you cannot get into, uh, the driveway because it's free, because it's free. Uh, and the situation that we have in the Health Science Center, of course, years ago, uh, the Health Science Center did not have a whole lot of parking garages, and, and so now, we're seeing that the Health Science Center, uh, is in the process of, of course, building more buildings, but also building more, uh, parking garages. Uh, in this case, it's, it's a little bit, uh, difficult, uh, for me to support the, the petition, because, uh, I see again, a more and more, uh, Health Science Center students parking all over the area, because they want to try to avoid, uh, paying the 20 or 30 dollars a month, uh, for parking. Uh, and you have a lot of faculty, uh, who, they do the same, they do the same thing, they, they park up and down, uh, the streets, uh, in, in the Health Science Center area, so they won't have to pay, uh, for parking. Uh, so, uh, and then again, I, I just want to thank you for, for, for getting the petitions, uh, and, and getting it done, but I, I just simply, um, cannot support it because, well, what you're going to find out is, that instead of you, you and your family and, and other property owners or other people who live, uh, along, uh, the Sixteenth Street, what you're going to find, uh, is you're going to find more and more faculty members, more and more, uh, students parking there because you don't have that sign. Uh, and, and of course, over time, like I said, I, I stay on the street where it clearly says, "No parking," but yet, when the concerts happen, people park on the street anyway. Uh, so, and again, I, 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 I want you to feel good about, uh, being involved in the process, uh, um, but I just simply, uh, cannot support it. But I'm going to, uh, move for approval, but I'm going to, uh, vote against the item.
We have a motion then to approve Jaclyn's request to remove the parking signs. All right, we have a motion in a second. So a yes vote is to approve, uh, the removal of the signs. Cast your votes. And the motion fails. One eight.
Is there anything, I mean, do you think, is it something that, um, could not be changed? If it, if I was to get a petition to where, like, maybe the fourth blocks or something like that, is that possible to do that?
It's possible, but, you know, the.
Agreement?
It's possible, yeah. I, I, if, if you want to move in that direction, I would engage your councilman, and, and perhaps work with the Health Science Center, and, and have some sort of broader scale look at the parking situation in the neighborhood. All right?
All right, thank you.
Uh-huh, thank you.
If I may say, uh, getting councilmen, but also, Jack, getting with the, you know, Neighborhood Association, getting college as well, not just one street.
Is that become a neighborhood association?
Yes, not all.
I just, uh, I just.
And that's one, I don't want one street changed.
Well, I'm just, I'm just trying to.
We'll talk about it later.
All right, we're on item 9C. This is a public hearing regarding dilapidated structures. Is there anyone here hoping to speak under any item listed under 9C? All right, how about a motion?
Would be answered.
Is there a second?
Second.
Cast your votes. Meg, did you want to vote against that?
Oh, thank you.
All right, it's, uh.
I told you I'm sorry.
All right, and so item 9C, that dilapidated structures passed unanimously. Item 9D is a public hearing regarding unsecured structures. Is there anyone here hoping to speak under any item listed under 9D? All right, how about a motion?
Would be answered.
Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. And item 9E is a public hearing regarding abandoned buildings. Is there anyone here hoping to speak under any item listed under 9E? All right, how about a motion here?
Would be answered.
Cast your votes. It passed unanimously. And item 9F is a budget amendment, and Doug Dollars walked in just in time.
Well, good morning. The budget amendment here is a little bit of cleanup and just, uh, normalize things here. The first item is with the debt service fund. Each year, we estimate what we think the debt service fund's going to be, and then when it goes to the excise board for the county, they finalize it. So we amend the budget to true it up with what was approved by the excise board. We've got a couple of changes on the Oklahoma City Metropolitan Area Maps School, or Public Schools Sales Tax Fund. Uh, one to change the amount that they pay for IT, uh, support there, and the second is, uh, related to their project management. They had been working with the Oklahoma City Public Schools. The Public Schools were going to do project management, uh, on a number of their bond projects. They were unable to, uh, retain the folks that they needed to do that, so our Public Works Department is doing that project management, and so they're reimbursing the, uh, Public Works Department for those expenses. And then on the Special Purpose Fund, uh, at Animal Welfare, they've just had a higher level of donations than they expected in the current year, so this just gives them the budget authority to be able to use those donations, uh, out at the animal shelter. So total amendment is about 15.8 million dollars, brings our budget overall to 1.1 billion dollars, uh, for fiscal year 15. Uh, mostly just some cleanup here. We'll probably have another amendment near the end of the year, just same sort of thing of donations or those sorts of things, uh, come along, just to make sure we're able to spend those. So be happy to answer any questions if you have any.
Questions for Doug?
Questions for Doug? This is a public hearing. Did anyone here hoping to speak under item 9F show up? All right, how about a motion?
Would be answered.
Cast your votes. It passed unanimously. Item 9G is, uh, an item from the MFA. Understand, we do not need executive session?
Right, this is a worker's compensation, uh, subrogation claim.
All right, how about a motion to approve then?
Second.
Cast your votes. It passed unanimously. Item 9H, understand, we do not need executive session?
We do not.
All right. All right, cast your votes. Item 9H passed unanimously. Item 9I, understand, we do need executive session?
Yes, sir.
All right, is there a motion to move item 9I into executive session?
Yes.
Cast your votes. It passed unanimously. Item 9J, understand, we do not need to discuss, so how about a motion to strike?
Would be answered.
Cast your votes. Item 9J is struck from the agenda. Item 9K is claims recommended for denial. Is there anyone here hoping to speak under any item listed under 9K? How about a motion?
Would be answered.
Cast your votes. It passed unanimously. Item 10 is claims recommended for approval. Is there anyone here hoping to speak under any item listed under item 10?
Would be answered.
All right, cast your votes, and that passed unanimously. Puts us on to items from council. Why don't we start down with you, Pat? This is a public hearing today, uh, regarding, um, an ordinance that would affect, uh, biking and, uh, how it interacts with automobiles. Is there anyone here hoping to speak on item 9I today? Or, I'm sorry, item 11? All right, Pat, do you want to have anything from council?
Just the fact that this is part of the resolution that was voted down last time we had a meeting. This is a state law, so all we're doing is mimicking the state law. That gives our police department additional flexibility dealing with, with violators of this law. Under the current situation, we, the, the police officers would have to take the violator to jail, have him charged, uh, charge filed with the attorney. Uh, under the proposed regulations, the police will be able to issue a ticket only if they cite this order. I think this simplifies things, and all we're doing is taking a state resolution, a state law, and putting it in our ordinance so we can enforce it.
Okay. All right, we have a motion in a second, so we need to vote on item 11A to move this one forward, and it passed unanimously. Pat, anything else?
That's all I have.
All right, John, Meg, David, Pete?
Uh, just a couple of things, Mayor. Um, most of you know, I'm sure by now, that, um, Municipal Judge Paige Morgan, longtime, uh, Municipal Judge Paige Morgan passed away last week, and, um, uh, at some point in the future, we'll, I'd like to have a resolution, give time for the family to be here and so forth. She's, she served for a long time and fought very courageously against an illness that has persisted over the last couple of years, and worked right up until the last, um, few days of her life. I just want to recognize that. Uh, the second thing is, I had a call from a constituent this week that, um, kind of hit a nerve with me. He was complaining about, he lives out in a rural area where I do, and he's complaining about the fact that all these companies that make these phone books just drive by your house and throw it in your driveway, and, you know, with the first day it happens, you go home and you, on my way home, I see every driveway's got one in it. Well, the next day, every driveway but mine's got one in it. And then, a week later, every driveway that I haven't stopped and picked up has got one in it. I mean, there, I mean, that's as, uh, that's obvious, just littering. It's, it happens in town too, I'm sure. It, it, it seems to be, um, you know, um, I've thought about it myself a dozen times, but the, the guy that called me, uh, I thought, why haven't I ever said anything about that? So now I'm saying something about it, but, um, I would think we could find out who the strip, the, the distribution company is. I'm sure they hire paid distributors, find out and put them on notice that, um, it's kind of like the problem with signs. I, I know Larry's worked really hard on the sign thing, but it, it seemed like there's got to be a way to stop it before it happens, to put people on notice that if we see their sign out there, I, I know the law says you've got to see somebody doing it, but those, the guy that benefits from the sign has got to be involved in that process. He has to be. Why would the sign be there? People, you think people just voluntarily go by and pick up signs that says, "I get you divorced for $50 and just stick them out randomly in the neighborhood, or I buy ugly houses?" I don't think so. Uh, there has to be a way to get to that, and, and this, um, yellow sacks with phone books in it just triggered the thought again in my mind, so.
Let's get some advice from legal. Kenny, do we have to see them do it, or is there a way we could enact an ordinance to address it?
No, Cindy's in the back, and she can come out and address it too if she wishes to, but I, I believe you have to see who the violator is.
Is that state law?
It's, uh, it is state law. For a misdemeanor, to be able to, to write a citation or arrest someone or prosecute a misdemeanor, you have to act, actually have someone who witnessed it occurring.
What if someone took videotape of it happening? Would that, would that work?
I don't, potentially, I guess. Uh, Cindy, would a videotape work?
Would a videotape work?
Videotape of the violator.
If, if, from that videotape, we could discern, or the police could discern who that violator is, then absolutely that can be evidence of, of, of a crime.
All right.
So couldn't the process of, of paying someone else to commit a crime, or encouraging someone? I mean, it happens in, the lady that, in, in Alabama's not going to death for murdering her husband, she's going to death for hiring somebody else to do it.
Well, we certainly have an aiding and abetting ordinance, but the problem, again, there, councilman, is to try to figure out who that individual person is. Um, we know who some corporate entities are that, you know, leave newspapers and flyers and things, um, in yards, but it's hard to find an individual to prosecute. Uh, I have tried to make contact with, um, uh, one particular entity that puts out a lot of, uh, little flyers, uh, or special papers, and, uh, got no response back, because I was trying to set up a meeting to see what we could do with, with this issue, but no response.
I, I.
We visited that before with Councilman Criner, and there are also some, with the newspapers and things, there are some First Amendment issues that we have with that, too.
I mean, would, would phone books fall under the freedom of the press, though? I mean, I, I don't think that probably would, right?
You'd have to research.
Okay.
Yeah.
I, I think we're talking about a legal issue to maybe a, a short-term problem that's probably going to go away. I mean, I haven't used a phone book in five years, because, you know, you look online, it's so much faster to do that. Um, and, and so they're still able to sell advertising, or this, it wouldn't be profitable. And I would guess it's probably one of those industries that I wouldn't want to invest in, because I think, you know, long-term, it's not going to be able to survive, but I, I think it, you know, right now.
I think the litter on a stick's going to survive, though. I mean, I think that's going to survive. You know, it's got, they have a phone there, it says, "Call me." You know, if they have a phone there on, says, "Call me," and that isn't enough to implicate the person that's asking to be called? We could find out where they're printed and go to the printer and find out who the customer was.
Yeah, but it's not too dissimilar to political signs that wind up in the right-of-way. And I remember, I was running a campaign, and I, we were putting out signs, and I was telling them to put them in private, and I told every one of them, "Do not put these in a public right-of-way, because it will, it will come back to haunt us, because it will look as if I don't adhere to the law." And I couldn't have been more specific, and I felt so proud of myself for being so specific and telling them not to put out the signs in public right-of-way. Next day, I wake up and there's signs all over the public right-of-way, and I just say, "Well, maybe, some things you can't stop."
Maybe if we prosecute Councilwoman Sager today for having signs and set an example. Now, I, political, there's, I, I mean, obviously, I have a soft spot in my heart for political signs, but.
Can I identify you again?
No, we can prosecute Councilman Shudee today. Just one of you, you guys could volunteer, who wants to be prosecuted?
We'll be needing a special prosecutor and a special judge, councilman.
But I just think there's got to be a way, it's hard, I know it's hard. I'm not, I'm not denying it's hard, and I'm not denying there's some risky things involved in it. But political signs are different in this respect, is the people that benefit from political signs go pick them up. They're not, they're out there for a day or two, and then they're gone. These, the guy wants them to be there forever. I mean, they must, there's a whole industry of people that just, that generate putting those out. There's one I pick up probably twice a week, and I can, if I was collecting them, I'd have 10,000 of them, because the guy puts them in the same spot, I take it, day later, it comes back. If I had time to sit there with a video camera, I'd nail him, but I don't, I don't have time.
Yeah.
I don't have time. But I just think we've got to, we ought to put more energy into it. We can argue the political thing a couple of years from now, but.
Well, you know, one thing we could do is increase our efforts to remove them. So, if you spent time putting out signs and they were gone the next day, no matter what you did, you might stop putting them out, and, you know, it'd be an upfront cost on us, might be a long-term benefit.
Well, I just, I promised the guy that called me I'd talk about it today, and I'm just keeping a promise.
All right. Larry?
Having considerable experience, Cindy, thank you for your comment. Having considerable experience with litter on a stick for a number of years, it's not as easy a solution as you might think. We even had a sting going one time, but we couldn't get sting to work, because call forwarding told the person you were calling who was calling in to that number on the sign. The other thing on those signs, a lot of those signs have burn phones that they recirculate all the time, so trying to trace them down. Jim, you do have a plan, do you not, that sends some staff out on a periodic basis, not just twice a year? They are doing a much more aggressive picking up that litter on a stick.
We do, and I think it's had an impact. It's still out there, but it isn't, it isn't as, it isn't as thick as it was a few years ago.
And now for a shameless commercial. If you have a neighborhood that is concerned about litter on a stick in their neighborhood and adjoining properties to their neighborhood, they can get a permit or authenticity, authentication, I guess, from city staff after some training, that they can go out and they are empowered to pull up the illegally placed litter on a stick signs in specific areas, and that's been very effective. A number of the neighborhoods in Ward 3 and some of the other neighborhoods around town have taken that challenge on, and they're helping peat out by pulling them up, and even if you really want to get into it, Jim will arrange for you to get a special tool, John, that you can pull the litter on a stick off the telephone poles down, and it works a lot better than a driver out of your golf bag, I can tell you that. So, there are some ways that we can take a approach to this to try to clean up the litter on the stick side, but you do have some constitutional problems with the campaign signs that you better watch out for. So, that's my little vignette on history.
And Chrissy Jaeger just reminded me that we are doing a, as part of the spring cleanup in Oklahoma City Beautiful Sweep, we are doing a special sign sweep in April.
But if you do it on a regular basis, you can discourage some of them from putting it out, if you get them right quick.
Okay.
And on that same line, Jim, I don't like to throw you a curveball, but I've had some conversation with some folks who are concerned about getting people in neighborhoods energized and involved in what's going on in the city, and I think I'm correct in this, the city channel does not go into Canadian County. Is that correct?
I believe it does, but let me, let me.
Would you check to see if the citizens in Canadian County who live in Ward 3 can get access to Channel 20? I don't think they can for this city.
Zach, can you answer that question?
Yes, sir. Zach Nash with PIM. City Channel 20 does not get broadcast anywhere outside Oklahoma City limits.
But it does, it is broadcast in Canadian County, in the Oklahoma City limits.
Yes, sir.
It does.
And residents can also watch live on our YouTube stream. We stream it 24 hours a day, seven days a week, and that is youtube.com/cityofokc.
Okay, so citizens who live, like, out in the area where we have, to the west of County Line Road, what you're saying, they can get Channel 20 on their cable. On Cox?
We will verify that and get back.
Would you verify that for me? Thank you very much.
We could have them call in right now.
Yeah. I wish they would.
If you're watching from Canadian County in Ward 3, feel free to contact.
Contact, 761-6555.
And let them know.
Thank you, Your Honor.
Cox does carry it. There may be some that do not get, have access to Cox, which then we have internet access.
You have to have a digital TV connection, regular TV.
Right, that's going Cox. Ed? All right, James? Okay. City manager reports.
We have nothing this morning, but do want to remind you that we will be taking a tour of the police headquarters following that conclusion of the council meeting.
All right. Citizens to be heard. Anyone signed up? All right, and we will have a tour of the new police headquarters, but first, we'll have executive session.